Welcome to September 12, 2023 City Council Meeting. Roll call, please.
Mayor Webb?
Here.
Mayor Potamlando?
Here.
Councilmember LaCuro?
Here.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Here.
Approval of the agenda is presented.
Move approval of the agenda is presented.
Support.
A discussion, deletions. Motion passes. Special presentations. Resolution to honor youth assistance for 70 years of service. I'm going to read this proclamation, or resolution, I should say. If anyone from Youth Assistance here want to come up and represent them at the podium?
Should I?
Yeah, you and-
Oh, you can go to the podium.
Bev? I know you're part of it.
Unexpected, very nice, thank you.
Whereas Oakland County Youth Assistance began in Hazel Park in 1953 with a group of Hazel Park citizens led by Dr. Wolford Webb and juvenile court judge Arthur Moore. And whereas, together they developed a program to assist troubled youth within their own communities, rather than referring them to the juvenile court. And whereas, youth assistance exists today due to the unique responsibility of local government, the local school district, and Oakland County Circuit Court Family Division, allowing the program to expand over the years and to become the unit of Oakland County Circuit Court Family Division with 26 officers throughout Oakland County. And whereas, youth assistance caseworkers are available to each school district to provide counseling services, assistance, and growth opportunities to youth and their families. And whereas, the Hazel Park Youth Assistance Committee is rightly proud of its role to founding Oakland County Youth Assistance. And under the current leadership of President Andy LaCuro strives to provide important services to the youth of Hazel Park. So therefore be resolved, the Hazel Park City Council hereby honors the youth assistance for their 70 years, 70 years, of dedicated service to Hazel Park in Oakland County, and we extend our gratitude to the volunteers and the employees of this important program. Thank you.
And Andy, there's a birthday party coming up, correct?
Right. It's going to be September 20th? I'm sorry, I don't have that in front of me. I put my glasses on.
September 20th, next Wednesday, 5:30 to 7:30 at the Hazel Park Rec Center.
Okay, very good. And if I'm not mistaken, Youth Assistance is requesting that folks bring gift cards for the kids as a gift to celebrate the 70th anniversary.
Right.
So-
Any denomination?
Gift cards of any denomination.
We're looking to, you know, 10 or 20, 70 of them, to give out to the kids throughout the year.
So you're thinking $10 or $20?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right.
So if you can find it in your heart, it's a good program. Youth Assistance assists kids in the community throughout the year. And, you know, it's a program that Andy and I have been having some recent discussions about, and we'd like to involve more in some of the things that we're doing here. So I look forward to working with Andy and Amy Sullivan and the board there at Youth Assistance, as well as the schools, to develop and bring a closer relationship together.
Thank you. I want to thank the city for recognition, you know, the recognition of Youth Assistance. It's been a program over the years that a dollar spent in this program returns more than $20 of savings down the road with family having troubles, or schools, or the police. You know, it's a great program. It's been expanding. And Bev here, who's the former chair, has been doing some programs like, one of the most probably famous is the Grinch. Grinchmas, Grinchmas, Grinchmas.
We just finished the Rock Hunt.
Yeah, just leave it off. Go ahead.
So I wanted to point out that there'll be a newspaper article on Wednesday, so please read it and check it out. And Andy Klazowski, he's just so thrilled with our program. He said he hasn't heard of anything lasting 70 years like this. What did I attribute it to? And I said it was the support of the city, the schools, and the county. That's a very powerful group of people. And I think that has kept us, kept us going. So I appreciate your support, and the proclamation tonight is wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. One.
What was the time again for the event on Wednesday?
5 o'clock to 7 o'clock.
5 to 7, at the Rec Center?
At the Rec Center.
620 West Woodward Heights, for anybody.
Thank you.
All right. Next proclamation, recognizing September 2023 as National Recovery Month. Ms. Klobuchar, would you like to read that one?
Whereas, according to the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, in 2021, 6.5% of Americans or 46.3 million people 12 years or older were classified as having a substance abuse, substance use disorder in the past year, including 29.5 million people who are classified as having an alcohol use disorder and 24 million people who are classified as having a drug use disorder. And whereas, according to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, over 105,000 overdose deaths occurred in the United States in 2022, a 2% decrease from 2021. And whereas, substance use recovery is important for individual well-being and vitality, as well as families, friends, and communities and businesses. And whereas, OCHN continues to educate and raise awareness of the risk and potential harm associated with prescription drug misuse. And whereas, stigma and stereotypes associated with substance use disorders often keep people from seeking treatment that can improve their quality of life. And whereas, substance use disorders occur when the recurrent use of alcohol and/or drugs causes clinically or functionally significant impairment, such as health problems, disability, and failure to meet major responsibilities at work, school, or home. And whereas, substance use disorder recovery is a journey of healing and transformation, enabling people to live in a community of their choice while striving to achieve their full potential. And whereas, substance use disorder recovery benefits individuals with substance use disorders by focusing on their ability to live, work, learn, and fully participate and contribute to society and enrich the culture of their community. And now, therefore be it known that the city of Hazel Park hereby recognizes September 2023 as Recovery Month and call upon our citizens and organizations to recommit to increasing awareness and understanding of substance use and the need for services to promote recovery.
And we'll make that proclamation, and it will move us to the proclamation recognizing September 2023 as National Suicide Prevention Month. Mr. Andy, Councilman LaCuro would like to read this one, I think.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A proclamation declaring September 2023 as Suicide Prevention Month in the city of Hazel Park. Whereas September is known as National Suicide Prevention Month and is intended to help raise awareness surrounding suicide prevention resources available in the community. And whereas World Suicide Prevention Day is observed each year on September 10th. And whereas suicidal thoughts can affect anyone regardless of age, gender, race, orientation, sexual orientation, income level, religion, or background. And whereas, according to the Centers for Disease Control, more than 48,000 people die annually by suicide. And whereas, suicide is the second leading cause of death for people 10 to 34 years of age, the fourth leading cause among people 35 to 54 years of age, and the eighth leading cause among people 55 to 64 years of age. And whereas organizations like the National Alliance on Mental Illness and National Suicide Prevention Lifeline, 988, work to help individuals in crisis and provide resources to shed light on this highly stigmatized topic. And whereas, every member of our community should understand that throughout life struggles, we all need the occasional reminder that we are all silently fighting our own battles. And whereas Oakland Community Health Network is committed to be in a zero-suicide organization and cultivate a network of providers who are engaged in the zero-suicide philosophy. Now therefore be it known that the city of Hazel Park hereby recognizes September 2023 as Suicide Prevention Month. We call upon our citizens and organizations to recommit increasing awareness and understanding of suicide prevention and the need for services to assist individuals in crisis.
Before I proclimate that, I just wanted to say that we all know someone close to us or a family member that has dealt with suicide, or a friend. And that is very important. It's also dear to me that we all look out for others and try to make the recognition to those that need to help and give them the supporting cast in that role if we just are there to lend a ear. That's all. Thank you. We'll proclimate that. Take it on to civic announcements. Anyone have any civic announcements of upcoming events or anything that's going on? I want to say congratulations to the art fair organizers for a very successful event.
Yep, absolutely.
Anyone?
Special thanks to Amy and Rob and Lily and the-
Those are the three organizations, really.
Okay. And we'll close civic announcements for the public. Civic announcements for City Council, anyone?
Art Fair was great. I thought it really went well. It was very well attended, and I heard nothing but great things. And it was also a pleasure to see everybody at the Hometown Huddle. I want to thank Amy Croupy and the members of the school board here tonight for inviting us. And I think that it was a great event to bring the community together, and I look forward to next year's event.
Okay. Close civic announcements, open to public discussion. Anyone pushing to come up and speak about anything at all? If you're here for the ordinance, then I will ask you to come up and speak on the, or it seems to be, there's four people that want to speak on item four on the administrative reports, I will open up a public discussion for that momentarily, if that's okay with council. We okay? Okay.
(inaudible).
Other public discussion? Seeing no one, close public discussion. Consent agenda 1 through 12, council will be your wish.
Your Honor, I move adoption of the consent agenda items 1 through 12.
Any discussion, comments about 1 through 12? See, I'll just go down here. Business license for 22031 DeQuinder 3 Jase Auto Glass LLC. Anyone here to represent them? Welcome to City Hazel Park for your license. 24211 John R. Clay Avenue Guitar Company. Welcome to Hazel Park. 23941 John R. E&amp;N, John R. Practice DVA Detroit Tooth Consultants. Okay.
Hmm.
That's interesting. 24141 John R. Green Living Brands, DVA Superior Grounds and Gardens. Anyone? And I believe that will do it.
Where were those tooth consultants when you needed them, huh?
I wish I had them months, a year ago. But anyways, take the item 1, ordinance 2, on the administrative reports, ordinance to amend Chapter 15.12 offenses, second reading. Council will be your pleasure on the second reading of this. We've been over it once. Only once.
I'll move approval of the ordinance number 05.23.
Support. Any more discussion on item 1, changes to the second reading? Okay. Motion? Any dissension? Motion passes. All right, we got that one now the way. Ordinance to amend Chapter 5.44 short term rental, second reading. Appreciate all the hard work on the changes to this, and I think it's going to be beneficial to us as a city.
Your Honor, I move adoption of ordinance 06-23.
Support. Any other changes? Open for discussion.
I just want to echo your sentiment. This was a labor of love, putting it out there for a lot of the people and city staff. And I think this ordinance really reflects all of that love, but also really gives all of us the opportunity to better regulate.
Drop the hammer. We talk so much, we dropped the hammer. All right. And I thank you, sir. Any other comments on it? Any dissension? Motion passes. That one passes. Okay, distracted driving. We all know about this one. Orders to add distracted driving section 10.27.020 to add to the definition of title, 10 vehicles and traffic to the Hazel Park Municipal Code and ordinance and to amend section 10.27.030 and penalties thereof in the 43rd District Court distracted driving law, second reading.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve. I'm going to read this whole thing.
Okay, just make it.
1027030 and the penalties thereof in the 43rd District Court.
Okay.
Support.
Any more discussion, dissension? Motion passes. Item 4, ordinance to amend Title IX Public Peace and Morals and Welfare 7 offenses by or section minors, Chapter 9.88, entitled Disturbing Schools to add definition section 988.010B and to add community service to penalty section 9.88.030, second reading. And we have four people wish to speak on this, and I'm going to ask them if the council doesn't mind, we pass them to come up and speak on this item first. Take Dr. Amy Croupy.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for having us here. I first want to kind of just put in there that the Community Health Coalition just received a half a million dollar grant to continue to work and to support individuals that may have drug abuse issues or other concerns along those lines. So that's a great addition to this month to hear about as we add prevention to our kids and to our community members. So pretty excited to see you do that tonight. First, I want to say thank you. I want to say thank you to all of you, and to add specifically on the collaboration that we continue to do to grow community schools. Within those community schools, I want to step back to nine years ago when I came to Hazel Park, and we saw a significant increase in behavior that was happening within our schools and truly across America. During that time, we did significant implementation of PBIS, which is Positive Behavior Intervention Services, restorative practices. We have implemented social emotional learning through trails, which is funded through University of Michigan to work on concerns. We have full-time social workers in every single building. We have behavior support in all of our elementary schools. So we put a tremendous amount of items in place, and we worked hard to look at discipline and how it was going. We have a standard code of conduct, Swiss forms studying this on a monthly basis. But then COVID came. And what we saw across America is children coming back with violence. We saw children coming back smoking marijuana. We saw children coming back in fights, and we saw those significant fights in our community. And we sat together as a team with the police department, our resource officers, which are truly invaluable, and with our city officials and said, what can we do? And I am very thankful for the opportunity for us to have civil infractions in place, that we can educate our children in a learning way to come and see and to understand what happens when you are physically violent with someone into the court system. I appreciate the fact that we are educating and helping our students that are vaping, especially with drugs, to know that, you know, there's a reason that marijuana is legal for those that are older and not for kids. And we see this vastly within our schools. What we have seen also, and I have people to speak about this, is the reduction of these violent fights, fights where kids were stomping on others' heads, kicking people in the stomach, right here in our city, not necessarily always in the school. And those have reduced because kids don't want fines. Kids don't want to have to talk to their parents about a fine that they potentially could have. And we are also spending much more time with our families and our parents. Every single fight comes before me, and every drug use is coming in front of me as well. And those that are vaping, not drugs, get a fine and don't get suspension. So we continue to work very hard on this. I want to turn this over to my principals because I want to understand how important it is that we continue with this to keep order in our schools. There's a lot of discourse about this across the country, and I think what's really different is, is that we have so many things ahead of getting to this point that we can use even youth assistance for those students. The one piece we haven't addressed, haven't addressed as an organization, is truancy. And I'm not sure if you realize that we are the fourth highest truant in the country, in the state of Michigan. And so there are more things that we can do to try to help to work together as a team to educate and support our kids. We want our kids to learn. We want all children to be able to learn inside of our schools, and reducing this disruption is one way to do it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll bring up George Demus.
Good evening. I'm George Demus, the Assistant Principal at Hazel Park High School. I just want to say thank you for allowing me to come up here and share a few words with you. My hope is that this governing body will keep these ordinances in place. It's a huge deterrent for kids with both vaping and fighting. They'll come to me, kids will get into a disagreement and come to me and say, hey, Mr. Demus, I can't afford a ticket, I can't afford a fight. There is a consequence, obviously, on the school side, but I work hand-in-hand with Detective Piper, who issues those citations, so kids know that that is there, and it also helps with vaping as well. Kids will say, I don't want to get a ticket, I don't want to be cited for that, my mom and dad's going to be upset about it. So I think it's working, and I hope that it stays. I looked at a little bit of data. I started as a dean of students a couple years ago. We had approximately 20 fights. That was reduced last year to half that, under eight, approximately eight, and I think that's a direct result of these two ordinances that are in place, technically that has to do with fighting. I know it's our job to educate kids, but first and foremost, we can't do that without our schools being safe. So again, I hope we keep these ordinances in place, and thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, George. Let's say Kendall Smith. How are you doing?
I'm doing well, thank you. How are you? I'm Kendall Smith. I'm the principal at the alternative school. This is my sixth year there. I just wanted to let you guys know that I have a rapport with and an understanding of my students that's unparalleled, as well as a love for my students. That said, it is essential that we keep these citations in place. Many times, our students don't have the ability to resolve conflicts peacefully, and these ordinances help deter students from using their fists, honestly. Students come to me and say, hey, I would have a fight with this guy, but I know there's a $500 ticket laying on the line if I do have a fight with him. Parents hold their children more accountable for vaping when they receive the $50 citation for it. It's essential that we keep these things in place. It helps me if we don't have these in place. I don't, I don't know what we're going to do next. I mean, we talked about the school-to-prison pipeline. Students are not receiving a misdemeanor or something like that. They're receiving a civil infraction. It helps me as an administrator to have these things, measures in place to deter students from making inappropriate decisions. So please keep them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we have mysterious Jimmy Patterson. We haven't seen you in a while. At this meeting, anyways.
Good evening. I appreciate the time, the opportunity to speak. I will address broadly the concerns, the legal aspects of this ordinance. I think that it's been characterized as a school-to-prison pipeline and escalation in punishment, when in fact it's completely the opposite. It's reducing the impact. The alternative is, I think there's a commonality of interest. Everyone here would agree, we all want safe schools, and we all want it to be minimally invasive to the students, to not impact their records, as people would reflect, or to subject them to criminal penalties. The alternative to having these ordinances in place would be to resort to criminal process. The ACLU is correct. There are laws on the books that address this behavior. They are misdemeanors, they are felonies. They would result in a prosecution by the Oakland County Prosecutor's Office, a petition to the juvenile court, creating a record for the students. You've heard some thoughts on how impactful it's been, and it's been minimally invasive. This is a further step. It also addresses one of the concerns that the Michigan Supreme Court has had over the last three, four years, with ability to pay. They take each case on its own merits. Not everything is a $500 fine. It may be community service, it may be youth assistance, it may be something less intrusive than a $500 fine, certainly less intrusive than an assault and battery charge that may result in them being incarcerated, taken to the village, if they'll accept, booked, processed, potentially lodged. And that's the alternative. If we don't have something like this in place, then we'll look to the other statutes that do exist, and that's not anyone's preference, because we believe that they should be in school, that that's the best place for them. And that's the commonality of interest. If this were more invasive, then I would be completely against the idea of passing this ordinance or amending it to take into account some of the changes that it reflects. And I'm available for any questions, but I think we are all on the same page. It's how best to get to it. I see this as the best mechanism to accomplish those goals. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Does anyone else like to speak on this? Seeing no one, make yourself for a motion.
Your Honor, I move adoption of ordinance 08-23.
Support.
I would like to-
Discussion.
Yeah, I would like to have a discussion on this. I hear a lot of conflation of the issues that are being ticketed with actual severe criminal penalties, as you just said. I cannot, I cannot fathom a world where a student would be prosecuted for being loud or for, that's an inequitable conflation. And I'm hearing that hosted and touted as the reason why this is a better option. If this is such a great option, why is there not another city in Oakland County doing it? If this is such a great option, why are no other cities doing it? Why are no other counties doing it? Why? That's what I want to know. I disagree strongly with the conflation that this is a preventative versus a punishment. This is flat-out a punishment. And trying to tie direct effect between these, the single year of institution of the penalties and the fines with this drastic, there's no way to combine those two, that drastic reduction of the violence in schools. There's no way. I heard a lot of hyperbole, you know, people saying, oh, I'm not doing this because of this fine. I'm not sure that that's relevant either, because my issue is that this is a civil rights issue. That is my issue.
More discussion by Luke Londo?
I certainly appreciate your perspective. I just want to note after discussions with Councilor Patterson, as well as Dr. Croupy, that this particular ordinance has not been wielded towards students who are merely being disruptive in class. All of the incidents have been for acts of physical violence. I believe that that is, you know, certainly an appropriate intervention, because for that, I think those are more likely to be prosecuted as assault and battery or other charges that would, you know, escalate into misdemeanors, felonies, lodging. I certainly can agree and appreciate that. I would hope that this or a criminal statute wouldn't be used towards students being disruptive in class, but that hasn't been the case so far, and I think that this ordinance serves as a good deterrent regardless to prohibit that kind of conduct.
Thank you. Any other comments? I respect everybody's opinion, and I think it's all valid in some way or another, how which it pertains here. But I'm looking at the perspective from our administrators and professionals in our school district. I think that they see more of this going on than we, as a city council, can see as a, rather than being apparent. And I understand we're the only one maybe that has this ordinance, but on the other hand, Hazel Park set a standard with other ordinances and other things we've done, and we set the bar. And it's sometimes setting the bar is tough, and making tough choices and to save a child may help them, and if it's a $25 fight, or maybe they get a demerit. Back in my day, it was demerits. Okay? And they put you in the corner, and they sit in the office, and you serve your two, three hours of, I felt corporal punishment. I'd really just paid the 25 bucks.
If this is, if this was such a straightforward ordinance, if this was such a straightforward plan of action, I heard somebody refer to the fact that they worked hard with administration. You worked with our city manager and our city attorneys. You did not work with the administration. It was brought to us at the dais as an emergency ordinance. There was little to no discussion about this before we voted on it. So that is not working with the administration. That is not, if this is so important to you, if this was so, if this is such something that you stand so strongly behind, what was the rush to push it through? That's, and that's not a question for the audience. I don't expect a reply, but that is my other strong feeling about this. There's a lot of-
This rush came back, what, a couple years ago when it all got passed?
This was in 2021.
21, yeah.
So we've had a year of it being enacted, and then I started discussing this with fellow members of city council, my issue with it, when we received the email.
Okay.
And I've had a phone call with every one of you individually.
And I, I kind of feel that, you know, there's an opportunity here for us as parents and people to protect our students from getting going down the wrong path. If this stops them in a very abrupt way to say, hey, I'm doing something wrong, at least someone was there to point it out. And sometimes you fall through the cracks if you don't have the, the process in place to catch someone in the wrong spot. And that's all I'm saying. If you catch that person, that kid, you know, young adult, young, you know, even younger, if we can catch them and help them make a choi, life choice that's going to be beneficial to them down the road, that's what we're all here for.
I don't, I don't disagree with that, and I don't disagree with the end goal. I disagree with the process, and I feel strongly that this is a civil rights issue, and I, I won't, I won't waver on that.
Okay.
Your Honor, I'd like to reiterate that the motion to amend this ordinance isn't to pass an ordinance to begin with, it's actually to strengthen it so that we can address some of those underlying civil rights concerns.
Correct.
And I think it's a little better than it was the first time around. Do we have a motion on the floor? I'll take a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Londo?
Here. Or, I'm sorry, yes.
Councilmember LaCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
And the sheer principle, I'm still voting no.
And Mayor Webb?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Mr. Mayor.
Please, one, nay.
For the record, I want to thank the school district for being here. We do work together, we do have a great working relationship, and, you know, how it usually works is, you know, we do bring things to the governing body. We did bring that to the governing body, and the governing body passed at 5-0. A, a letter was written by a law student. There were several factual errors in the letter. That's okay. I think that everyone addressed those issues quite well tonight. I understand everyone has a right to their own opinion, and I respect that. I just want to make sure, for the record, that everyone knows that everyone that I have met with, and everybody comes at this from the, with the best intentions possible to make sure that we're doing everything that we can to be as less invasive or as less restrictive as we can to handle these things, while at the same times, making sure that we are protecting the kids in this district. And we want to make sure that everyone in the city of Hazel Park is safe when they go to school, and I believe that this ordinance has shown a great deal of success, and because something is possible doesn't mean that's how, that is being applied. And the level of professionalism that I see from the Hazel Park schools and from the administration and the administrators there, I'm always impressed with their dedication to our students and how much they want to improve things. And to shift gears a little bit, Superintendent Croupy mentioned how much we've been cooperating lately, and you're seeing more cooperation now between the city of Hazel Park and the Hazel Park School District than we've ever seen. And I can say that, because I've lived here my entire life, and I am intimately familiar with the history of the relationship between the city and the schools. And we've got this wonderful program, and I want to thank everybody on council and everybody in the Hazel Park School Board for their support of the Junior Vikings program. That's been a huge success, and everybody in this community has embraced that program, and I think that's only going to get better. And I want to thank the dedicated parent volunteers that are part of that. It's a team effort. I think that everybody at, everybody at this table and everybody in this room wants nothing more than everybody to be healthy, safe, and happy, and for our students to be able to learn and get a great education, and have some fun while they're doing it. So to that end, we're going to continue to work together, and we're going to continue to do some things, like they've opened the pool now for the community. We haven't had a pool in Hazel Park that's been open to the community in well over 10 years at least, so this is one more thing. There are so many good things that are happening, and Andy and I have been having discussions about how we can involve youth assistance more into, you know, our juvenile processes and procedures. It's definitely a voluntary organization, that's part of their, their bylaws, but, you know, participation and referral in that can be something that's used by the courts. So we're going to be having more discussions, obviously, with, you know, with the Circuit Court and the Probate Division and things, the Family Court Division and things like that, to make sure that we're all working together at every level of government to make sure everyone is safer. Yes, sometimes, sometimes safety requires the imposition of consequences, and we shouldn't be afraid to impose those consequences when they're warranted. But everybody's goal here is to use the least punitive approach that's possible and to be as corrective as possible, so that we can achieve the goal that we want, which is every student getting a great education, growing up safe, and living a long, healthy, productive, happy life. That's what we want. We want to get a great start in Hazel Park, so. And again, thank you all, because I don't know that everyone at home knows all of the work that's gone into getting some of these programs up and running, and it's been a great deal of effort, so. School board members, I see we have some of them here, and of course, it's a city council meeting. People at home need to know that these people work together, talk together, and we're always trying to make things better for the city of Hazel Park. So that's my speech. I hope that everybody moves forward, and we get along, and we do great things in this community.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Klobuchar. Moves us to boards and commissions, Environmental Sustainability Commission. I'd like to make an appointment.
You know what, Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Hold back?
Yeah, we'll just give the administration some time.
Put it on the next.
Yeah. We're going to, we'll make that appointment.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, for coming out.
Why am I holding up my phone?
Old business, any old business want to come up? New business? I got one thing I want to bring up for Mr. Young. There he is. We had a little thing where the Vactor truck was going around and kind of smelled up a few people's houses today, the last couple, last few days. One of them was mine. I just want to let public know that you said to me to run the faucets and let the house air out, of course, but sometimes the drains get, the water unsettles all those traps.
Correct. So the Vactor truck can create different pressures within the sewer as it's cleaning, which will, at times, it'll pull the water from the traps of the home.
Right.
And then what happens is you've just lost that barrier that protects your home from that sewer smell that comes out of the main sewer. So it's a real simple fix, just get yourself a bucket of water and just refill your traps with water, run your sinks, flush your toilet, and all the traps will refill, and the smell will disappear. Open your windows, let it out faster.
And you could please make a notation on the water bill to let people know when they have any currents, if they don't, I'm quite sure, to run the water or call you.
I would appreciate if they would to call us if they notice it, so we can check our lines as well, make sure we don't have an issue out there.
Little, little heads up to some of the people that don't understand the process would be nice.
Sure.
Could we also get that posted to city social media pages as well?
We can.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Young.
Thank you.
Takes us to, any other new business?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just one thing. Andy LaCuro sent us an example of builder's code of responsibility from the city of Birmingham, and we do hand out some similar information, but we're going to see if we can't sharpen that up and turn that into something that's a little more concise and looks a little bit more like that. But we are already giving them a, a lot of that same information.
That's a good code.
One of the things, too, though, I noticed, is the fences around the properties, you know, especially with a basement, they're.
Right, it's dangerous.
It's dangerous.
Yeah, we're, we're addressing that with this ordinance, and we're going to require fencing.
I've been on that one for a while.
And not, not orange, snow fencing.
No, like a, like a metal fence, you know.
Well, Ferndale requires it as well.
Right.
And so does a few other cities. But thank you for investigating.
I see these things, it just happened to.
No, it's a good idea.
And another thing, can we get a little bit of an update on Highland, particularly between Jarvis and Hary area there? The road is just totally disintegrating.
Yep, we're, again.
Tom has it on the list.
It's on the list, it's high on the list.
We got an update as to where it would be.
The Highland-Battel corridor, I'll speak with them tomorrow at staff meeting, but that's obviously our next target. And I'm glad you brought that up, because we get some extra money now from the county for local road repairs. We've been using that money to resurface Woodward Heights. We'll finish Woodward Heights next year, and then we will begin to turn our attention to some local road repairs, obviously. Battel, we may have to do some of that stuff this year. I'll get with Tom Jones tomorrow, and I'll give you an update on that as well, and, yeah. We'll, I want everybody to know, we're not, we haven't turned a blind eye to that, it's just that we're prioritizing things right now. We have to finish Woodward Heights and allocate those resources to that, but after that's done, we'll be able to do many more local road repair programs. I know from what I'm hearing, if I were to guess what the biggest issue is now that I'm hearing out there, it's the, the local road repair, so.
That's the biggest one.
Yep.
All right, take it to communications from department heads. Any department heads want to come up and speak? No, thank you. City Attorney Melissa Swartz?
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Same answer, Ms. Klobuchar?
Michigan system, the municipal finance remains fundamentally broken, so if I didn't say that at a meeting, it wouldn't be a meeting, I guess. So after I die, you can play that recording. Hopefully, maybe, maybe they'll, maybe they'll fix it before I die, and it won't have to go on my tombstone or something like that, but I am hopeful for some incremental fixes, but I hope it's not a belief in Santa Claus.
It's going to be our new city motto.
Well, you know, again, everybody, it's, I try to explain why, you know, why we, I see, and I talked about it last time, we pay such high taxes here, why, why can't we get our roads fixed? And I explain, and explain, and explain, so I won't say everything that I said at the last meeting, but remember, headly propa, our taxable value per cap is low, and it was trapped after the property collapse of 2008 and the seven years after that of decline. So clawing our way out of it, little bit by little bit, slowly but surely. And MERS changed the assumptions on us, and they raised it a million dollars a year. So that marijuana money, that has to go for that. If it doesn't, you will be taxed directly for that, taxpayers, and you will not have a say in it. So that's how that works. It's called a judgment levy. So we're doing our best to protect your pocketbooks every single day here.
Thank you, sir. Councilperson Sullivan?
I want to start off by mirroring some comments made earlier about the art fair. I want to thank everybody who attended the art fair this year. This was our 12th annual, but our 11th actual event, because we had to skip the one year with COVID. Big shout out to Lily Ritzow, Zograff, and Amy Aubrey, who were our, our organizers and our planners of the art fair. Also, huge shout out to our Parks and Rec Department and the Hazel Park Police Department, because they always step up and step in and really, you know, make it happen, so. Big thanks to everybody here in the city that, that tips their hat and, and joins in for this event to be so successful. We had some changes to it this year. We think those changes were really, really well received. We had a meeting last night where we discussed maybe adding some additional things for next year, but we feel like we've kind of got it to a place where it is really, it's, it's almost like a blueprint, and we feel really comfortable with the blueprint. So thank you, everybody, for coming, and we are now in the process of trying to plan additional art events, you know, at least one more throughout the year, so we'll see how that goes. It's all volunteer-based, so join us at our art, our art council meeting. It's the second Monday of every month at 6:00 PM. Watch our social medias, because we are traveling around the city, hosting it in different locations. This next month, I believe we are having it at Rusty Bug Glass Blowing Studio right here in Hazel Park. So if you're interested in checking out that business, it's a great time to join our, Arts Council meeting and also experience a local business. I also wanted to echo the thoughts of the Suicide Prevention Month, and just a reminder that 988 can be dialed like 911, and it is not just for people seeking help or feeling suicidal, it is also for people who see somebody who might need help or see somebody that might be struggling, for you to get resources to maybe be able to hand those off to them or to get those people resources. And then also, coming up this weekend, I wanted to wish everybody who celebrates a happy Rosh Hashanah. That's it.
Thank you.
And happy first birthday to Finn Eagle Londo.
Oh. Well, with that being said, your introduction's amazing.
That's.
All right. Congratulations to Dr. Croupy and the, the entire, you know, school team for the hometown huddle. I am sorry that I missed it for the second year in a row. Last year was shortly after Finn was born, and this year, I was finishing out my last project for my previous employer, but by all accounts, it was an extremely successful event, so congratulations. Hazel Park Youth Assistance, 70 years, is an absolutely massive accomplishment, and it's not one of those programs that is just, it's not insignificant. The, the youth assistance program is, it's absolutely massive, and the, the work that it does for the community and for the kids of our community is, is really, really stunning. I'm just extraordinarily proud of everybody that has a hand at it, particularly Councilmember LaCuro. Substance Abuse Proclamation and Suicide Prevention Proclamation are two issues that are near and dear to my heart. I know it seems like every one of these meetings, we will do a proclamation of some sort. Those are not just like a rubber stamp, those are issues that are important to all of us, some of us, you know, members of the administration, but I think these two in particular are, you know, as the mayor said, everybody knows somebody that's been touched by one of these issues, so tonight especially, I'm very grateful to have had those on the agenda. I want to echo everybody's comments about the art fair, Amy, Lily, and Rob, and also Councilmember Sullivan, don't sell yourself, sell yourself short. The work that you do for, for that event is absolutely fantastic. It's one of my favorite things that we do as a city every year. I was able to make it this year and spent way too much money on art that is now framed into my room, very excited about. And a happy first birthday to Finn Eagle Londo on Saturday. Daddy loves you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Councilwoman LaCure?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks again, it has been touched on, all the volunteers that came out for the art fair. It was a great art fair, and they get better and better every year. It's, I want all the names. And it was nice to see all the folks that came out to the hometown huddle as well. It's all the groups and the organizations that come out and show what Hazel Park is all about, and the volunteers are what it's all about. It is also nice to see all the school board, the school board members that are here, not all of them, but it's nice to see them all that are here. And I do look forward to our working together more, more and more. There's opportunities. Thank you also for the youth assistance recognition and to all of its volunteers. It's a, you know, they've done some really good work, and one of the things I really like is the youth recognition event we have every year, and recognizing some of the youth that have persevered through some very challenging times in their life. And on that note, if you love somebody, tell them. If you have children, hug them every day and tell them you love them. Thanks for coming out.
Thank you, sir.
I'd say thank you to everyone that come out this evening. I'd like to say thank you to the school board members that are here and the superintendent of schools, and appreciate your support for this ordinance, and I'm glad that we got a discussion philosophically, have our differences on things, even we do, but making the ends meet, meet, it means to the end of the road to make the students happier and more productive, and maybe gives them a better chance at life, is the ultimate goal of every, every parent, every teacher, everybody that's involved with schools. With that being said, thank you again for coming out. I want to say thank you to all the, all the people that put the art fair on, all the volunteers. It was a beautiful art fair. It was a perfect day, weekend for it. You couldn't have got any better weather. And hometown huddle turned out very nice, a lot of volunteers there, a lot of groups, a lot of people was out there. It was very nice to have that kickoff for the year, and, you know, makes a really big difference. And I'd like to go back to, you know, when you really get out in the neighborhoods and start talking to people, I talk to people every day, and some of my customers come to my shop. It's all about people. It's not about our personal feelings all the times. It's all about, when you really get down to it, what we can best make for, yeah, I could make it fun by talking my hand, but the best thing is to actually work out. could make it fun by talking my hand, but the best thing is to actually work out the differences among us as neighbors and friends and look out for the benefit of our community. And that's what we're all get elected up here to do, is look out for our community. We have, like I always said, I got 17,000, maybe a little less now since the last census, residents that we have to represent. And we're not always going to appeal to the best opinion to every one of those. We're going to make the best choices with the best information we have at hand. Whether we make the right choice or the wrong choice, we got to feel that this is the correct choice for the masses. This is the benefit of the long-term agenda for the city of Hazel Park, and that is where we all sometimes get to, and I'm glad we can have philosophical differences even on this board, and we do. And we come to an agreement, sometimes with or against, to make the benefit for the future of our children here in our city. And thank you. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you.